This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the Council of Planning Board meeting for January of 2021. We apologize for the late start, but we're having a few technical difficulties. You may notice that not everyone has video, and we all have audio, so we will continue with our meeting. Jeff, would you like to go over the format for the remote meeting, please?
Yes, so regarding tonight's meeting, we had some people have called in, they're on hold right now. If you wish to participate and provide public comments on an agenda item, please wait until that agenda item is up and call 336-996-1289. So that's 336-996-1289 to call in, and IT personnel will put you through the planning board. Tonight, we have three public sessions. There's a Cale's Creek Final Development Plan. There's also a consideration to amend the land use plan. The board may or may not take that action tonight. And then there's a planning board recommendation on North Main Street rezoning case. That case at public hearing has been closed, so action by the planning board can't take place tonight. So the three public sessions, since they're not public hearings, action can be taken tonight. There are five public hearings on text amendments. The art text amendments, and we'll hold a public hearings, the public hearings will be closed if the planning board wishes. Typically, we have a follow-up meeting two days later, but to save a meeting, we will follow up with action by the planning board at their February meeting. And so the public hearings will be held on the five text amendments tonight. Under state law, we have to wait a minimum of 24 hours before you can take action, which is recommendation to the Board of Aldermen, and we'll be taking that action at the February planning board meeting. Thank you, Chairman Waddell.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Now I'd like to do a board roll call. Please respond by saying present if you're here. Margaret Burke?
Here.
Diane Byers?
Here.
Steve Hutchins?
Present.
Tom McDaniel?
Here.
Chris Oakman?
Here.
Jim Frattonberg?
Here.
Joe Orinstein?
Here.
Nathan Meyer? Luanne Davis?
Here.
And Jim Waddell is here. The next item on our agenda is approval of a minute for our December 14th, 2020 planning board meeting. It was a pleasure of the board.
I move for the approval as presented.
There were a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
And a second, we'll go through the roll call. Margaret Burke?
Yes.
Diane Byers?
Approved.
Steve Hutchins?
Approved.
Tom McDaniel?
Approved.
Chris Oakman?
Approved.
Jim Frattonberg?
Approved.
Joe Orinstein?
Approved.
Nathan Meyer? Luanne Davis?
Approved.
And Jim Waddell approves, so it's unanimous. The next item is the Final Development Plan. Debbie Joyce, agent for owner, for a final development plan approval. Site plan titled RL-3 at Caleb's Creek in the MUS-two-phase zoning district. The property located on the eastern side of Teed Lane, being all of the southeastern intersection of Teed Lane and Hedgecock Road, being all of pin number 6874-72-7049, and a portion of 6874-82-3359, containing 56.41 plus or minus acres. The victim is requesting approval of the second phase of a two-phase special use district zoning petition. Requested uses are residential, single-family. This is zoning document K-570-FDP-TRL-3. Jeff?
Thank you, Chairman Waddell. I'll now share my screen. As described by Chairman Waddell, this is a final development plan in Caleb's Creek Development for residential, single-family. The site plan, 56 acres, 80 lots. The density is 1.42 units per acre. Under the watershed, this is considered a low-density project. It would be less than 24% coverage on this project. There's a large area along Apis Creek that will remain undeveloped. That will give them the credits to keep it a low-density watershed. Also in the site plan, the street layout meets the access alignment with a future second access to Teed Lane through a parcel the town of Kernersville owns at the intersection of Hedgecock and Teed. And the site plan, it is noted, future right-of-way to be acquired by Teed, from Teed OK. The roundabout will be constructed when Teed Lane Road improvements are completed. Currently, the trigger for completion of the Teed Lane improvements, or a financial surety posted, is when the last phase of RL-7, which is Oles Trail, which is across the street, requests plating. Housing design follows the traditional housing design standards for Caleb's Creek. Hip and gable roofs, decorative windows and trim areas, well-defined front entrances, garage doors, panelled and framed with decorative trim, usable porches, or at least 13, 36 square feet, with a minimum depth of five feet. The design standards shall apply to all sides. Distinct trim will be incorporated, and no two elevations with identical window door designs are used to be, used in the same block. Also should be noted, Caleb's Creek wayfinding will be used. If you've gone down Teed Lane lately, like Elk Ridge, the project just to the north, has the wayfinding now in place. Also should be noted, the public greenways and private parks, one of the bigger features of Caleb's Creek as it develops, will be a series of public parks and greenways, but also private trails. This project will hook up to the existing greenway at Elk Park. Currently, the greenways are maintained by the homeowners association. Until such time, there's a network, and they'll be turned over for public, public maintenance. So right now, just to the north is Elk Ridge. The new greenway will head north to south along the existing pipeline, will connect over to August School Road, make a kind of loop section with other sections, and this will be connected to the public road. Also, there'll be a private walkway, similar to Oles Trail, through the bottom lands for access for the, for the residents. And there'll be two connections from the public sidewalks down to the trail system. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan and conditions is presented in the staff report. Happy to answer your questions.
Any questions from the board at this point?
I think we do have some callers on right now. I see Debbie Joyce is on. One of the engineers, Brent. Matthias, could you recognize somebody?
Debbie Joyce is now on the meeting.
I'm on, yes.
Ms. Joyce, are you online?
I am, yes.
Any additional comments, Debbie or Brent?
I'd just like to say, Chairman Waddell and the board, we appreciate, as always, you're working with us. We're excited about this new development for Caleb's Creek. It will bring some nice homes and a good price range that, that we are missing right now in Caleb's Creek. And we look forward to the builder coming in.
Okay. Anyone else have any statements from the board? The board have any questions?
This is.
Can we get the address from Debbie Joyce, please?
Yes. Can you state your address, please, Ms. Joyce?
Yes, 1110 Dover Road in Greensboro.
Thank you. Any questions from the board from Ms. Joyce? Okay, thank you, Ms. Joyce. Anyone else waiting to speak before the board?
Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. When you make the motion, please state your name, so we can make sure we get everything right for the meeting.
The motion is made by Steve Hutchins.
Seconded by Margaret Burke.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Margaret Burke?
Yes.
Diane Byers?
Yes.
Steve Hutchins?
Yes.
Tom McDaniel?
Yes.
Chris Oakman?
Yes.
Jim Frattonberg?
Yes.
Joe Orinstein?
Yes.
Nathan Meyer? Luanne Davis?
Yes.
And Jim Waddell is a yes, so it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Next item on our agenda is the consideration of amending the land use plan. Remember, we had a special meeting to discuss the land use for specifically North Main Street. Does anybody on the board have any comments or any desire to, to make changes to the land use plan, to present them?
I believe Ray Thomas wanted to speak out on this item.
So nobody, nobody has feedback? Nobody has any comments about land use plan? So we'll make no recommendation to the Board of Aldermen for changes?
Chairman Waddell, can you hear me?
Yeah, Matthias, I think the Ray's case is next, the rezoning case is next.
Perfect, thank you.
So there is no comments, okay. So next on our agenda is a rezoning. Ray Thomas, attorney for owners. Commissioner requests a one- and two-phase special use district rezoning from RS-20 and HB-S to LB-S, limited business, special use district for properties located at 1020 North Main Street, containing a total of 13.03 plus or minus acres, and being all of pin numbers. Phase one, 6886-99-0428, and 6886-99-3040. And two-phase, second phase, and 6886-99-4736. The recommended uses are printed in the staff report. Anyone wish to... Is anyone waiting in line to discuss this here?
Ray Thomas is on the line.
Jim, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Ray. Go ahead.
Okay. Pardon?
State your address, if you would, Ray.
Okay. Raymond D. Thomas, 116C South Cherry Street, Kernersville, North Carolina.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay. In regard to this, when you look, there was no comment as to the, any changes in land use plan. I assume everyone got my letter, which pretty much states everything that we wanted to say, but I will say this, and I have permission to do so. The grocery store involved is Foodline. The present location, they've been there for over almost 37 years. The plan, if this is approved, it would probably be, their lease now terminates 2023, and it would be at least that long before anything, I mean, before it would be completed going through their process. Our point, if this is still a big issue with members of the board, then you're involving yourself in a business situation. But their primary reason for doing this is upgrade and new way of doing things. And after 30-some years, I think that's probably a fair reason for making a change. But anyway, so, and we, we had their permission to tell you this. But we still think that that is a good location. We have followed the requirements to do a limited business zoning, and this property is less than 10 acres, as recommended in the limited limited business zoning. The other things would be that the idea of blight and so forth, I hope some of you have ridden around that area. I did so, and be quite frank, except for the two sites that have been discussed previously, the Rite Aid building and the Lowe's store, which is under rent, are the only ones, except maybe one place, in a solemn area, I don't know whether it's an office or restaurant or whatever, in the Lowe's center, they call it Pine Grove Plaza, that was empty. But I don't, it's my position that the reasoning, the causing blight and so forth, I don't think is justified. Anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Any questions of Ray by the board? Okay, thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Anybody else waiting to speak a moment?
Yeah, Matthias was IT. Anybody else wishes a call, they can call, and Matthias can recognize. Currently, Jim, we do not know if anybody else is on the line. So I believe Ray is representing this case, so we do not have any other callers on the line at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, what's the discussion by the board?
Is there, I mean, is there any chance of getting any upsets to the existing building and and improving it?
Who are you asking that of? Me or Ray?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Yes, I mean, it's not uncommon, of course, I think all of us experience retail centers that go through upgrade and changes, layout and store format. You know, but in this case, you know, Foodline is desiring, instead of a renovation to the existing, is to build a new, new building. But I think, I think people have been here for a while. I think Harris Teeter, of course, have gone through numerous changes, adding pharmacies and layouts and certainly, I think even the Lowe's up on Wall, up on, in Lockerton, has gone through some renovations since they've opened. So I mean, it's not uncommon, I think, different stores we go to, they'll see renovation of existing sites.
And I think one of the things that is major in this case, too, it does not meet the land use plan that we've discussed in the past. This current design of the property. Other questions by the board or comments? What's the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, and this is Luanne. I'm really torn on this, because I feel like you're telling a business that they can't improve and have a new location and a fresh look and possibly more square footage and I, I, I think, you know, no matter how, how I vote, I don't feel like it's a win-win for anybody, really. And I'm, I'm, I'm really conflicted about this, because we didn't change anything to do with the land use plan. And I understand that the land use plan up in that area was talked about many, I don't know how many years ago, but Macy Grove Road Interchange was just a, was being talked about. It wasn't in place yet. And I don't think very many people from the community participated in those meetings that Jeff had. It's like we've had no, I've had no one reach out to me, but one person on this particular zoning issue as it is, but yet we hear people want a new grocery store up there. I haven't heard that from one citizen in Kernersville, period. I heard it from a commercial real estate agent. So I feel like we don't have a lot of input from the community on what are their desires up in that area, and then I feel bad about deciding whether or not a business can go into a new area, because if I were a developer, or if I owned Foodline, I wouldn't want you telling me I couldn't do that. That's just my two cents.
Go ahead, Luanne, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Luanne.
Oh, I'm done.
Well, we don't really tell them they can't go up there. We're telling them to design it according to our land use plan. Since we didn't decide it not to change it, we're asking that the development comply with the land use plan.
Right, but I, and, and this is Chris Oakman, and I agree with Luanne. By telling them they have to apply, you know, comply with the land use plan, is basically telling them that they can't build a building to the size that they want to build a building, because the land use plan doesn't allow for that. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm with the land. I'm very, very torn on this one, very torn, as to which way to go, so.
Well, I think we all are, but that's the purpose of land use plans, in my opinion, is that we decide that in this section of town, we want this kind of development. We want this kind of development over here for a different section of town. And by doing that, we, part of our charge is to plan and control growth. And we devise these land use plans, which can be changed at any time by a recommendation from us to the Board of Aldermen for them to vote for change. In this case, evidently wasn't a feeling of the board that they wanted to change the land use plan. So now we have a development that does not match the land use plan, and it's, it's a hard decision.
Okay, so maybe I'm, and this is Chris again, Chris Oakman, maybe I'm a little confused. I was, I thought that what we just went through in the land use plan and, and going over that was an exercise in, in learning about the land use plan. I didn't know that we were voting tonight on modifying the land use plan. I didn't, I thought those were, that was a totally separate thing. I thought that's what this was about. In this, that we're, we're looking at right now is modifying the plan. But maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong on that as well.
Well, that's what we just, prior to going into this rezoning, is where we were talking about, does anybody have any feelings of changing the land use plan?
All right.
Because if you had a strong feeling that you wanted to say more square footage or whatever in the land use plan, you could, we can do that as a recommendation to change the land use plan for the Board of Aldermen to vote on. Nobody had a feeling for it at that point in time, so now we're into rezoning, and we've got a rezoning that doesn't meet the requirements of the land use plan. And what, you know, basically what, there's been a lot of discussion about what the people in North Main Street and that area want. They want the same thing everybody else wants. They want convenience of shopping and grocery stores and entertainment and all that kind of stuff, just like everybody, everybody else has never really wanted. So, so the question here is, again, we're faced with the land use plan is the land use plan, and we don't recommend any changes. And then we have this development that's not needed, so that's where we are.
Jim, this is Diane Byers. I have a question. So based on what Chris and Luanne just mentioned, and we can't go backwards on what we just discussed on the land use plan, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that at all, no.
So we.
All I'm saying is, this is where we are now, because we took it in that order. But you want to go back? You want to hold off on the rezoning, go back and talk about the land use plan?
Well, I think, this is Margaret Burke. I think that, that we need to do something to help the lost side of Kernersville. It's, they're not going, it's not going to go residential. And so we need to do something to help business go there, out there. So what is, what is a recommendation? Where are we?
Well, right now, we are with the current land use plan.
Well, is that going to entice businesses to go that route?
It probably will not induce large-scale grocery stores and that kind of stuff in that Macy Grove, North Main Street interchange.
So Jim, this is Luanne. So I know we discussed, or we've had some discussion around, when you put in a shopping center of any sort, you typically need a, a anchor to draw people there. So the way the land use plan is currently on this particular plot of land, it only calls for, what is it, up to 20,000 square foot anchor of some sort?
Yeah, something like that, and all buildings have to face the main roof.
Okay, so would that, would, what kind of anchor would that be at 20,000 square feet? I'm, I'm not sure I know.
Yeah, I'm not sure I know either, but.
I don't think it's a store that people are looking for on that side of town.
Okay, so maybe I'm in favor of backing up a minute and discussing the land use plan. That's kind of my feeling.
Okay, that's fine, we'll, let's go back to the land. We'll table the discussion on the rezoning for right now, and we'll go back to land use plan. Anybody have any comments they'd like to make about the land use plan?
Yeah, this is Frattonberg. So is it as simple, or is it more complicated than this? Is it as simple as sort of adjusting the square footage allowance for the anchor in that, in the shopping center there? Is it just that simple?
Well, if you, if you're going to mix the two, yes. It's going to have to be a larger square footage, and the building's going to have to face the main roof. Just more of a village concept.
What's the square footage on the present Foodline building? Does anybody know?
Jeff, you know that answer?
They're approximately the same square footage, the proposed and the new, they're approximately the same. the same. And that's what 35.
Okay.
This is Diane. Jeff, do you have an idea of how much square footage is in that old Lowe's building?
I, I believe when we looked at before, they're approximately both the same square footage.
The Lowe's and the, the old Lowe's and the current Food Line are about the same.
Correct.
And what did y'all say that was?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What did you say that square footage was currently?
For the land use plan?
No, on what the stores are now.
They're, they're all in the same square footage range.
What is that number?
Like 40, 45 in that range, plus or minus.
So the, the new store that they want to build, would it be smaller or, or the same size?
Be smaller according to what we've seen in the, in Ray's letter and maybe in the materials. So he's looking, they're looking at 35 and change, almost 36.
Right. That's what I thought.
Jeff, would you mind, this is Joe. Would you mind giving us maybe the, and I know we went over this at length at the last meeting, but would you mind giving the board the benefit of maybe a 30 second or one minute recap of the reason that the land use plan exists as it is with respect to that area town where we're, we're considering this, this change?
And I, I can, yes, I can. Basically, I use myself an example. I live, live in Branchwood. My main commercial area is the North Main Street area. You know, not to be dramatic about it, but in my 30 years of land use planning, one of my biggest mistakes was believing that the Lowe's grocery store on Piney Grove would stay open. I was told it would be renovated and that they'd build a new store on South Main Street and also renovate the Walker Town. Staff would have never recommended new Lowe's on South Main Street if it were going to Piney Grove closed. The land use plan, the principle of the land use plan, I use the South Main Street example of the old Kmart shopping center. We attracted a developer to renovate that to a target center because of our land use plan, which limits it, limits business expansion. You know, land use plan as Jim talks about is set to not only promote development of existing areas, you, we do, when you promote one area, you're going to distract from another area. The land use plan is very purposeful on North Main Street that when the Macy Grove intersection, it was North Main Street went in, we went up there, we did a land use plan. All adjacent property owners, all property owners participated. We recommended not to expand the commercial strip so we could promote North Main Street existing commercial areas, just like the strategy we used on South Main Street to promote redevelopment of South Main Street commercial areas. In the long run, we hope to promote redevelopment of the North Main Street commercial area.
So specifically, the concern is that whether it's Food Line or someone else, you're basically introducing a competitor out in that area, out further out of the, the, the center of town. And the concern being that if it is Food Line, we're going to have a situation where we have a Lowe's Foods Shopping Center without an anchor. We're going to have a Food Line Shopping Center without an anchor. And basically, a, a, what could be potentially a pretty seriously blighted area of North Main Street closer to the middle of Kernersville, whereas, you know, all, basically pushing the, that commerce down Macy Road, Grove Road, and, and really leaving us with the kind of an empty hole there in the middle of town.
Yes. You can drive anywhere across America and see that blight due to expansion of commercial strips. The other most important thing to remember, commercial is driven by residential. Residential causes the market, the consumer. On the north side of Kernersville, there's no public sewer. So you do have growth going on, but it's not septic. You don't have the intensity. So we're, we have a very slow consumer growth taking place in the North Main Street. So if you abandon this North Main Street Food Line with the abandoned Lowe's, without a strong growing consumer, it's going to be very difficult to see any promotion of redevelopment of existing centers and to attract people into that core area.
But Jeff, aren't we assuming the, the job of the developer and owner of the property when we do that?
Yeah, well, yeah, the development, you know, since we know it's a Food Line, it's, it's the Food Line market area, basically, they're going to go capture more of the Oak Ridge Market. Oak Ridge Market probably has a higher income level, a higher consumer dollar. But that, then that just abandons convenient shopping for, once again, I'll use myself, or many other ones who live on the north side or central area. So you're just basically allowing a developer to go against the land use plan and shift his, his, uh, point, his center point out towards an area outside of the city of Kernersville, leaving the city of Kernersville behind.
So if they build this, if they build this, they won't have, will they not annex into the city limits that?
But it's not the, there is a condition for annexation, but the, the consumer, when you move it north, your, your customer base will be more outside of the town limits than it is now. Just your concentric rings, your, your, that's, you know, the, your market analysis. We do market analysis all the time, just like the grocery stores do. You do your ring analysis. So when you push your, the store further north, of course, ring analysis is going to go further north.
I think the one thing that really bothers me is knowing that Lowe's is paying to rent that old building and keep it empty. And Walgreens is paying to keep the old Rite Aid building empty. So even if somebody wants to go in those buildings, they can't because somebody's paying rent on them already to keep them empty, which is very frustrating.
But that's really very short term when you consider what a land use plan is looking at. The land use plan is looking at the long range. I'm sure, I'm assuming the old Kmart Center, when the old Kmart Center closed, it was a good chance they closed the day their lease expired, maybe. But most likely, a lot of these retailers, the, the decisions of closing major stores is basic on a big picture, paying out that lease at the end. So there's a good chance Kmart sat there. But it's, it, we're in, the community's in for it the long run. You know, they, you know, retail are in it for the short-term game. Of course, community, we're in for a long-term game.
I, I think my point that I was making was really probably more in agreement with you in that while they're paying to keep those buildings empty, I feel like it just makes that all go downhill even more because you're going to lose people in those shopping areas because they're in an anchor store there. And the property deteriorates some. And I'm concerned that if Food Line does move to the new building, then are they going to pay rent to keep the old building empty so they don't have the competition?
I think Ray stated that, I mean, I didn't, I did not get a copy of the letter, but Ray stated, sounded like the lease was up in 2023. And so they'd be out. In, in some shopping centers, I was with, I was talking to a developer last week who owns a shopping center. In some shopping centers, they do have lease arrangement. If you do vacate, you have to terminate your lease. But typically, that's not the case on anchors. Kind of anchors get the better lease arrangements where they can vacate and keep the store closed. But it's typically a smaller tenant. If they vacate, they do have, that's breaking the lease. But anchor tenants typically get more flexibility.
I will say that I have, while I have not heard much other than Ray's letter, haven't gotten much input from the community about this issue. And I don't think we have as a group, even though we've considered it pretty thoroughly. I will say that I do on a maybe weekly basis hear about that Lowe's Foods and how it's sitting vacant and how it's such a shame. And so to me, this is, this is a pretty, pretty serious thing. I, I think that in terms of making sure that our community, you know, keeps, keeps from having blighted areas, we were really met with the interesting decision. My view of it is that the, we should make a revision to the land use plan as a whole. If, if we are going to make an exception, we can do that. I think there needs to be a justification for making that exception. But to me, the land use plan is the way it is. And Jeff designed it that way for a reason. And it's to avoid a situation like this. Anyway, that's my, my two cents.
I think you're right. That's one of the things. Once the land use plan is done and out there, then developers know it's there and they know what the requirements are if they want to go there. So.
This is Steve Hutchins. I, I totally agree. There's no point in doing a land use plan if we're not going to follow the land use plan. It's sad for Food Line if they want to move, but I just think we need to stick to the plan that we set forth a long time ago.
Okay. So we, we step back to the land use plan. Does anybody want to make any recommendations as it concerns the land use plan?
Hi Chairman Odell, we have a one caller on the line and I will unmute them now.
Uh, yes. My name is Danny Dillon, 1263 Old Salem Road in Kernersville. I'm one of the eight property owners of the parcel you have under consideration. And thank you for hearing my comments this evening. I have submitted comments from previous meetings on this issue and assume they're already on record. From listening to the previous meetings, it is my impression that the staff and board do not want any development on this property or the parcel on the other side of County Line Road. You have used terms like blight and leapfrogging to justify keeping it vacant at this time. To keep any development out, you simply have put restrictions on the property that no developer can justify. All of the property that you are considering belonged to my great grandfather a century ago. So needless to say, I have relatives living in the immediate area. They are in their 80s and are now driving to the south side of Kernersville to buy groceries. Others in the area have told me they drive to Oak Ridge. Friends that live in Chelsea Place and on County Line Road have expressed to me the need for a grocery store on that side of town. Many have expressed opinions that South Main, Highway 66 seemed to get all the attention. Four grocery stores, at least a dozen food services with drive-throughs. I understand this is the Salem Parkway corridor and would naturally have more need for services. But now we have Macy Grove Road extension that will eventually connect to Piney Grove Road. The Aldermen have just approved a 34 home development on County Line Road with less than a mile of this parcel. Developments are building on Bethel Church Road as well as Piney Grove Road. Thus, there will be an increasing need by the citizens for services. We are all aware that on South Main Street and on Union Cross Road, there are brick "Welcome to Kernersville" signs. We even decorate them at Christmas. Do you realize that on the north side of town, there's not even a sign that tells you when you enter the city limits, let alone a "Welcome to Kernersville" sign? So I'm appealing to you on behalf of my relatives, my friends, my neighbors, to the board to show the north side of town a little bit of love and approve this grocery store. I might add that a grocery store is considered an essential business as we're living in the COVID times. And in closing, I would just like to thank you for taking my call.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Appreciate it very much. So again, what's the pleasure of the board on the land use plan? Anyone wish to make any recommendations for changing? Okay. I'll take that as, as a no and, and we will not make any recommendations to Board of Aldermen. Now going back to the rezoning, what's the pleasure of the board?
I don't know where we are.
I think everybody's in a quandary.
Yes.
We need, we, we need to have a recommendation if we can. With the Board of Aldermen.
Well, I, I don't know what kind, I don't, I don't know what kind of motion you need or anything. But I am for the grocery store going there that they want.
So you're making a motion for approval of the development as presented by staff?
Um, I want to prove, whatever text I wanted to prove, that, 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 uh, store can go there where they are asking. I know that's an awful motion. I know it is. I, I, I plead guilty.
Well, I will say that Mr. Dillon's comment about there is nothing welcoming anybody to Kernersville on that side of town is very true. So with Margaret's motion, do we need to make a motion also to recommend a change in the land use plan to the?
No, no. What we're doing is basically just recommend, if Margaret's motion passes, we're making a motion to approve the rezoning as an exception to the land use plan.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll send it up to the Board of Aldermen to decide on whether they want to go that direction or not.
This is Fredenberg. I'll second Margaret's motion to approve the.
Okay. So we have a motion for approval as presented by staff and a second. Any further discussion on the board? Okay. We'll go through a roll call vote. Margaret?
Yes.
Diane Byers?
Yes.
Steve Hutchins?
No.
Tom McDaniel?
No.
Chris Oakman?
No.
Jim Frattonberg?
Yes.
Joe Ormstein?
No.
That was a yes? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no.
No, okay. Nathan Moore? Luanne Davis?
I'm going to have to vote no since our land use plan has not been changed.
Okay. And I vote no also.
So I, I believe, uh, Beth, do you have the motion?
I'm sorry?
I'm checking with Beth that she got the roll call.
Um, yes. A motion to, Margaret made a motion to approve the store and Jim Frattonberg seconded it. And then we have three no's and three yeses.
No, we have six no's and three yeses.
Yeah, you're correct. Sorry. I apologize. That's right. I checked them off, but I was looking at wrong. You're correct.
So the motion, please.
Yeah. And the second, and Jim, the second motion, we now, we need a vote now on the site planning conditions. As presented earlier, staff is recommending approval of the site plan with the listed conditions in the staff report. I do not recall any objections on the site plan or conditions. So staff continues to recommend regarding for the, for the recommendation going to the Board of Aldermen, the site plan as presented with the conditions.
Okay. Can I have a motion for acceptance of the site plan recommendation from the board?
Is that on this?
If I understand what we're doing?
No, no.
At the bottom of the land, of the rezoning case, it says, action required, rezoning recommendation and the site plan recommendation. We've now rejected this rezoning recommendation. Now we need a vote on the site plan recommendation as presented by staff. We've now rejected this rezoning recommendation. Now we need to vote on the site plan recommendation as presented by staff. Two separate issues. We do, most of the cases we have have two separate issues.
Um, yep.
Jeff, do we need a motion or can we just go through the roll call vote?
I mean, you could do, you could do either way a roll call would work, uh, because you're making a recommendation, the Board of Aldermen, they desire to have, you know, comments, any comments the planning, the planning board may have, but also what the board is.
I'll make the motion. This is Freidenberg. I'll make the motion to approve the site plan.
Who made the motion?
Freidenberg.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval of the site plan as recommended by staff. Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second it. So cor- correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
We, we, the, the motion, the rezoning do not, is denied. Now, the site plan, if the Aldermen decide to approve what we just, what we denied, if they decide to approve the rezoning, then they, we need to, we're recommending that they follow these rezoning approvals, correct?
Correct, as positioned, as presented by staff, which means all the, the things that staff said they want into it, to be into it.
Okay, yes, I, I will second that.
Okay, we have a second. So we'll go through a roll call vote. Everybody understand what we wrote now?
Yes.
Okay, Margaret Burks?
Yes.
Diane Byers?
Yes.
Steve Hutchins?
Yes.
Tom McDaniel?
Yes.
Chris Oakman?
Yes.
Jim Frattonberg?
Yes.
Joe Orinstine?
Yes.
Nathan Meyer? Luanne Davis?
Yes.
Jim Martels, a yes, a motion carried unanimous. Thank you very much. Yeah. And all our agendas are public hearings. These are the text amendments that Jeff referred to at the beginning of the meeting. What we will do is we will read the text amendment and then we will open the public hearing. And if, take whatever comments are made and then close the public hearing. There will be no final vote on any of these issues till our next meeting, okay? First one is a text amendment, Curtis Swisher, agent for the town of Kernersville, for a proposed zoning text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, amending the Unified Development Ordinance Committee uses table. Amendment is proposed to add residential building townhouse to the RM eighteen zoning district. This is zoning document KT two four six. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the petition? We have no one online to speak to this. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Next item is Curtis Swisher, agent for the town of Kernersville for a proposed zoning text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, amending chapter B, C, and D. Amendments address parcels with split jurisdictions as specified in the new state statute one sixty D. This is only document KT two four eight. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the petition? We have no one online to speak in either one.
There's no one online to speak.
Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Next item is Curtis Swisher, agent for the town of Kernersville for a proposed zoning text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, amending chapter A, B, and C. Amendment addresses requirements to update reference to provisions GS chapter one sixty A or one fifty-three A to relevant provisions in the new state chapter six, one sixty D, zoning document KT two four nine. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the petition? We have no one online to speak. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Next one, Curtis Swisher, agent for the town of Kernersville for a proposed zoning text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, amending chapter B, amendment addressing requirements to broaden conflict of interest standards for governing and advisory boards as specified in the new state statute chapters one sixty D. This is zoning document KT two five zero. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the petition? We have no one online to speak. Then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Finally, the Curtis Swisher, agent for the town of Kernersville for a proposed zoning text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, amending various sections of the Unified Development Ordinance. Amendment is proposed in order to comply with the conditional zoning terminology requirements as defined within GS one sixty D to one oh two point seven. This is zoning document KT two five one. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? We have no one holding online. Then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody holding? Wish to make any comments to the board?
We have no one online for public comments.
Okay, any type of comments? Margaret?
No.
Diane?
No.
Steve?
No, thank you.
Tom?
No, I'm good.
Chris?
No, thank you.
Jim?
All said here, no thanks.
Okay, Joe?
No comment, thank you.
Luanne?
No, sir.
Okay, and I have no comments either. Jeff, staff update?
I'm just one thing, um, I got an update from IT. We had some difficulties, um, going live earlier. Um, however, we, the applicant for the final development plan, Debbie Joyce, was of course online. Their engineer was also online with the go-to meeting, so they participated, um, through the go-to meeting. And also the, the other case we heard, uh, regarding the North Main Street, of course, Ray Thomas was online, participated through go-to meeting. Uh, one of the property owners was online through the go-to meeting. And I was also live at that time and all these public hearings have been live, so I just want to let anybody out there who's listening, uh, the IT department will be posting a full recording of the meeting sometime tomorrow. So a full recording of the meeting will be broadcast tomorrow. Uh, but earlier, some of the YouTube site, um, was not up, but the applicants were participating through the go-to meeting format. And, uh, and, and calls were being accepted. Next month, uh, we'll take action on these, um, five text amendments. Staff will give a brief background. They're all, they're very simple, non-controversial, pretty much required by state statute for four of them. Uh, we have, uh, residential rezoning case and also a, um, medical dental office down in Smith Crossing. So, um, staff will be presenting those at the February meeting. And I know everybody disappointed that we're not having a meeting two nights from now, but I'm sorry, we'll just wait till February. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, I'd like to make one quick comment. Um, I'd like to thank the board for their, their work tonight. I know this has been a very emotional case, um, about the North Main Street one and the, and the planning board and the land use plan. And I think everyone has, has done an excellent job in reviewing and understanding and discussing. So I think it's, it's, it's a good sign for the town of Kernersville. I'd like to congratulate all of you. Thank you very much. Anything else to be brought before the board?
I, I just like to say, I, I like to let people know, I, I'm not opposed to development or anything like that. I just think when we have a plan, we should follow the plan or we should change the plan. So I, I just don't want people to think that we're, I don't find this board as people that are opposed to development. And I just, just like to say that.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think that we are opposed to development either.
Right, I agree with that.
Anything else to be brought before the board?
No, thank you.
If not, I'll declare the, the, the general. Thank you.
Everybody have a good week.
All right, good night, I'll see y'all later.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Michael.